Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 21st, 2021 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. First up is the approval of our minutes from June 16th, 2021, and I understand Commissioner Kaufman, you did forward some corrections to staff before, uh, before tonight?
Yes, the, uh, the vote on, uh, item number three of the minutes under SDP 8551-2020 had been, uh, uh, how should we say, missed a line and the notation has been made to staff and staff will make a correction in the final minutes. So at this point, uh, if there are no other comments, I would move that we approve the minutes of June 16th, 2021.
Accepting your correction, I'll say second, and thank you for bringing that up.
All right, it's moved and seconded on, or I'll do the roll call, excuse me, I almost said all in favor say aye. Pretty soon we'll be back to that. Uh, Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins, no, no, he's not here. Sorry, I'm going off my script. Sorry about that. Uh, Commissioner Kaufman.
Yeah, Rob. Aye.
You know, maybe we should just start over. This is uh, an aye from Commissioner Kaufman. Uh, Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cantrell. And I'll vote aye as well, and I'll note for the record, um, Sharon is joining us this evening as a, as a full commissioner as we don't have, um, who's out tonight? Matt's out tonight, so she will be playing, playing the, the full, the full role as a commissioner. So thank you for doing that. Uh, next up is a recommendation to the Marion Council on our master plan amendment for Lake Forest.
What about the consent item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over that. Yes. Uh, next item is our consent agenda. There's one item on that agenda for AFP-8968, 2021. A proposed 240 square foot screened porch over an existing deck in the R90C medium density residential cluster zone at 438 Bostwick Lane, and this is amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions about the, um, consent agenda?
I just want to ask the, uh, staff as to why we, we are approving this particular proposal. It's only 240 square feet. Could clarify that, please?
Yeah, the R90 zone cluster, um, does require all additions be approved by the planning commission. So that is the reason why.
We very rarely see them as a whole public hearing. They're ordinarily, I think, consent agendas for, for consent items for these, this, the scale of project.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, any other questions for staff on, on this one? Oh, sure, Sharon.
The only other question I had was, um, it looked like the, um, the colonnade had to weigh in and so did the KCA. Um, I'm not sure I'm familiar with Boswick. Where, where is this property?
See Fernshire, Fernwood. Um, it's a different development.
There was actually no HOA requirement approval for this property, so.
I didn't think so. I just thought I saw something with.
We did require notifications to be sent out, so that may be what you saw.
Yeah, neighbor, neighboring neighborhoods get noticed.
Was where the colony was a neighbor, so anyway. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written into the record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Uh, okay. Next up then is recommendations to the Marion Council on our master plan amendment. Um, I assume Rob will be joining us for that, or Greg, how's that set up?
Yeah, Rob and Kirk Eevee will be joining.
Okay. So I won't bother to read all of this into the record. He'll let them, uh, set it up with their introduction. Hey Kirk, how are you?
Hi. I believe Rob's also joining us.
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening, commissioners. Um, so the next two items on the agenda we're going to do is consolidated because they're related to, it's the MP1-121, the actual Lake Forest Mall master plan, and MP2-21, which is the special conditions, which are included in the Lake Forest master plan. Please make note that even though this is consolidated at the end, actions will require separate motions for each of these. And, um, if, while the tech team pulls up, uh, packet page 144, um, just as we begin in this, uh, real quickly, the planning commission's records, uh, for both of these items closed on Friday, July 9th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. So therefore, with the records being closed, no testimony will be taken this evening. And as the, at the time of the planning commission's record closing, there were 96 exhibits in the records. And basically what we did is we just located each exhibit in the record. So you know, if it's exhibit one, it's exhibit one in both the MP1 and MP2 records. Um, next slide, please. So to begin, just to some background, once again, the Marion City Council directed staff on August 10th to move forward with the master plan amendment for Lake Forest Mall. Uh, the purpose of this amendment is to generate a narrative-based plan that establishes a framework for future redevelopment. And the plan itself is not intended to be a design plan that establishes block level requirements and layout. But rather, as we've seen over this last year, we'll establish an overall vision for a redevelopment for a small and express the elements and strategies to be included, or in some cases possibly excluded without exactly, without actually prescribing their locations. Next slide, please. So as with all master plans, there is a land use, you know, framework based upon the land use article at the state level, and this is really taking where it is. So, you know, and especially in particularly for tonight, um, one, the planning commission shall prepare a plan. So basically tonight's action is your plan that you will be passing on, approving, and then sending on to the council for adoption. But the underlying points are the really important takeaways from the land use article. Its purposes for guiding and accomplishing the coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the local jurisdiction and its environs, and that it guides public and private actions to develop private, public and private property and appropriate relationships. What this really means is when we do master plans, we're not developing, but developing them and looking at them to benefit any particular owner, developer, or stakeholder. At the end of the day, the role of the planning commission and staff is to develop a plan that best serves the city of Gaithersburg and its policies and all of its, uh, residents and stakeholders. So really this last underlying one, you know, the, a plan shall promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the local jurisdiction. So, uh, over the course of the record, there were a lot of things. Why are you doing this? How are you allowed to do this? You know, why aren't you listening to me? We listen to everyone, but at the end of the day, this plan reflects from the planning commission's role, the best thing for the city of Gaithersburg. Next slide, please. So again, um, while we didn't put it on the slide, it's pretty evident we are, the plan is recommending that the Lake Forest Mall, should there be redevelopment, rezoned to MXD mixed-use development, and, and based upon that, there were some overriding mixed-use policy goals that came all the way back from our engagement process of almost a year ago, and has carried it through through the work sessions and everything else. There's an emphasis on green areas and open spaces, that residential is an important component, but not the primary driver of a redevelopment, that the goal of this plan or redevelopment is to create density, but not a bedroom community, that residential should include new housing types that foster a variety of rental and ownership opportunities at various price points. Uh, the role of housing affordability and not regulated affordable housing, but housing affordability, um, was an important goal expressed, you know, throughout this process. And that we include a broader spectrum of commercial uses than mainly retail that provide a diversity of wage scales and career growth opportunities. Um, we don't want to replace, you know, one form of a mall with another form of a mall here. Next slide, please. So this slide I showed during the joint work session, and really these three big main facets are interconnected, you know, green area, residential, and commercial. They each support and contribute to one another, but understand that there's a finite area of redevelopment. An increase in one goal obviously reduces the area available for another goal. So the real, you know, purpose for us, what we really strove for in this master plan is to find the correct balance amongst these three things. So next slide, please. So to achieve these various goals, the plan structured in such a way that each section has a narrative discussing the topic. Um, in some cases, we have basic design standards, for example, for residential and commercial development. There's a collection of recommendations and the other application that's part of the consolidated review. We have special conditions. And special conditions are subject to a separate public hearing, but these have all been done concurrently and are mandatory requirements where most master plan recommendations you might, you have to show, you know, conformance with or, or aligned with. Uh, special conditions are requirements. There's no real gray area with this. It's a very binary yes-no, uh, response. Next slide, please. So the draft plan itself, MP121, was released for this formal 60-day public comment period on March 19th. And then we conducted our consolidated public hearing for the two applications on June 7th. And during that public hearing, we reviewed the plan structure and its contents. Um, all the, all the record comments that were taken from over the 60 days were shown and, and gotten, and we received testimony during the public hearing. Um, at the end of that public hearing, the planning commission, the council supported the majority of staff's recommended edits, which were shown as exhibit 83 going into that, including a new legal framework section and a recommendation matrix section. Um, the things that weren't, um, necessarily agreed upon at the end of that evening were the special conditions that were subject to a following work session of note as shown on here. The one thing that wasn't included in our memo but came out of the joint work session was there was consensus agreement and directed staff to remove what had been a proposed recommendation regarding, um, affordable, an affordable housing cap. So that has been removed and that reflected again, the consensus guidance received by both bodies. Um, next slide, please. So for the consolidated work session, again, the main topics all dealt with the special conditions. It dealt with the 35% green space requirement and how that is applied, how gap housing fits into the residential limits. Uh, the actual limits of townhomes and residential developer, development, the five acre total limit on solely retail uses, and the 30,000 square foot solely retail building footprint limit. These were the topics of that work session. Next slide, please. So going one by one, um, there became agreement, there was consensus agreement in support for a revised special condition as shown here on the slide, dealing with the green area, and really we kept the 35% as written on the public hearing draft. If there is a holistic unified redevelopment plan, but as discussed and, and shown that evening for a phased fragmented redevelopment plan, each application must include a minimum of 30% green area as defined in the MXD zone. And as was shown on the work session, this basically, um, a, a, addresses, you know, a non-unified plan, but a, a, essentially provides the same amount of green area over the entire site. Next slide, please. So for gap housing, um, the main thing that came out of this was because of the evidence in the record and things, people were confused when we were using the term missing middle. So while we're sort of following it, we did do a little tweaks and we came up with gap housing. And on here right now is the revised definition. And the main takeaway is, is it's intended to bridge the architectural and price point gap between higher-priced, single-family and rental-focused multi-family. Um, there's a bunch of different typologies that, that can be included in this, but it's typically two to four units per building that the sizes are between a multi-family unit and a typical townhome, that massing is similar and compatible with townhouses and detached homes. Um, so they can work within a block with traditional single-family units, and that parking is either shared or dedicated to each unit. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, the public hearing draft as, you know, just to show, you know, proposed a 1,600-unit cap, 7% cap of that on townhomes, 20 to 30%, what was then referred to as missing middle, and 63 to 70%, 73% of multi-family. This was the, um, graphic that we use for that. This isn't to be construed as a design plan, but it sort of just lays out graphically what we're sort of talking about with the acreages needed, um, to accommodate these various things. Next slide, please. So at the end of the discussion, at the end of the work session, we received consensus guidance from the council and planning commission that we're going to retain the 1,600-unit cap, which we've done. Townhouses are allowed to go up to 10%, which is shown in the yellow on the, on the slide here. Gap housing, instead of having the ceiling because, um, the ability, it's now just solely has a basement of at least 25%, which is shown on the orange here, and that multi-family can fill in the remaining balance, be it 40 to 65%. So again, as you look sort of graphically at, at the landmass needed, again, this is not to be construed as a dime plan. It doesn't talk about residential over commercial. It's just straight there. Um, this new proposal that we received guidance on is reflected in the current plan, sort of divides everything up into thirds. So next slide, please. Um, with the commercial, uh, the, the, the current special conditions, uh, say that, that solely standalone retail, you know, no mixed use, there's no office, there's no, there's just standalone retail. Um, facilities are limited to a maximum of five acres total, including their surface parking lots across the entirety of redevelopment, and that a solely retail building, um, cannot have a footprint that exceeds 30,000 square feet. And again, going back from the work session, this graphic sort of shows on the non-residential commercial area what that five acres means. Next slide, please. But the things that we wanted to clarify during the work session is it's applicable only to retail-only land. So if you do a mix of retail and office, you know, this doesn't come into play. Um, if you have retail mixed in with other uses, you can get unlimited acreage and footprint size. We use the example, um, down in, what is it, White Flint, where the Wegmans is on the ground floor and above it are 400 multi-family units. So that Wegmans is 100,000 square feet. We would allow a similar thing here at Lake Forest. Um, we wanted to make clear that the five acres doesn't have to be continuous. It may be, but it can be spread a, a, among areas. So the five acres really, really is a cumulative land accounting, um, in that area. It doesn't meant, meant to be one. And that you can have multiple stories on a 30,000 square foot footprint. So again, you know, it's just because the footprint's limited to 30,000, that doesn't mean you can't have three stories of, of retail. Um, you know, for a grand total of 90,000. Um, and there's no maximum number on the amount of 30,000 square foot buildings that can solely, uh, that fit within that five acre allocation. So again, at the end of this and with the explanation and showing some examples, um, the guidance received was, we're going to retain the special condition as written. We received both support from both council and planning commission. Next slide, please. So next steps, the plan has been revised, reflecting, um, all the guidance, uh, received in the direction and is included as exhibit 87. For the land use article, the planning commission is charged with approving the plan and the special conditions and providing a recommendation of adoption to the same to the council. The council then may adopt, modify, remand, or disapprove the commission-approved plan. Um, the hitch is though, that if the council proposes changes, you know, remanding it or modifying it, it's going to warrant a new public hearing process, and we will go through this all again. Now, to be clear, because the land use article says this is the planning commission's plan, you know, the planning commission does have the ability this evening, you know, to make changes without warranting a new public hearing. But because the council record closes next Friday, any potential changes made tonight have to be clear and explicit so staff can amend the resolution and amend the document before the ninth. Next slide, please. So with that, the first motion, as we discussed, because there are two, is that staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution PCR 121, approving MP121, the Lake Forest Mall master plan, an amendment to the 2009 land use element, and recommending adoption by the Marion City Council. The second motion is staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution PCR 221, approving the special conditions associated with MP121, the Lake Forest Mall master plan, and recommending adoption by the Marion City Council. And that ends my presentation, and Kirk and I are here and available to answer any questions.
Well, that was very well done, Rob. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Rob or Kirk? Sharon, please.
Um, so Rob, I, I saw in two different places, and maybe I was just confused. Is the entire property being, uh, rezoned to MXD? Or is it just C2 is staying in certain areas and?
C2 is staying on the entire mall. We are not recommending, as we state in the post-master plan section, we are not recommending a comprehensive rezoning.
Okay.
So each time they want to implement the master plan, they're going to have to go through the rezoning process to MXD involving a sketch plan.
Great, great point. Uh, good question. Um, anybody else? Don't be shy.
Are you just tired of talking about the Lake Forest Mall master plan at this stage?
I, I, well, I will say a couple of things, and maybe this was first more, more discussion. I, um, a couple of things I, I want to acknowledge. First of all, the, the tremendous work that the whole staff really did on this to get through that whole process of getting stakeholder input, um, those meetings that were, um, facilitated across a really broad range of, of not only stakeholders, but interested parties and, and those with, with knowledge about the potential for this site. Um, I mean, extraordinary work, and, and so thank you all. John, from you, you on down through the staff and Rob and Kirk, you out to the rest of the staff, however many people involved, and I gotta believe there was more than just the three of you in, in the middle of this, but uh, really nice work in pulling this together. That's sort of the first sort of overarching comment. The second is, I think the thing to be very clear about is that the, the master plan does represent a very broad base of input and opinions and knowledge and expertise. Um, even though we might have heard certain aspects or criticism of certain aspects of this plan from, from one or two, um, one or two places. I, I think the important thing to realize is that it's, it, this thing is well-informed from, from page one to page last, um, and, and covers, I think, in a very respectable way, a vision for the site that is in fact better for the city than just a single developer's vision for the land. Um, and I, and I point to a couple of things that we're going to step into this world of gap housing or this, this, the spectrum of gap housing um, in a way that's a real true commitment, not a, let's try a one street of it somewhere and see if it works, but, but is really essential to the success of the residential component of this plan. Uh, that'll in fact say that a major redevelopment like this is not going to depend on residential as the engine for the redevelopment, but something that's balanced and, and fully fleshed out across a whole, a whole array of uses and a whole array of, um, uh, types of, types of development. And, and that alone, I think, sets us apart from, from a lot of what we see in either neighboring jurisdictions or comparable jurisdictions, or even some of our own, our own, our own, the, some sections of our own master plans. So I think there's something to really be proud of here, Rob, or, for you and the team, that, that this looks and feels and steps into a new, a new area for us, um, in the way we're looking at, at a redevelopment area. So, so nice work.
Thank you. I would echo exactly what the chairman has said, uh, commending the staff with a fantastic job they've done, but also for the amount of input we received from the, uh, from the public. Uh, this was a, quite an effort during a pandemic. And to be able to get the kind of input that we got and the numbers that we got from, uh, citizens that are concerned about what this project is going to turn into and the master plan and how it impacted was, uh, outstanding. And, uh, it, it says a lot about our community and the citizens and how they take, uh, something like this so, so to heart and how important it is as an engine for our community in the future.
Good point. Great point. Sharon, please.
I would, um, I would also echo that as well. I mean, Rob, I think everybody kept saying, using the word transformative. And, um, I, I know how difficult this process was because it was almost like fitting, um, a keystone together to make everything work. And I think you did a beautiful job throughout the entire process. I'm extremely impressed. I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you a tactical question, Rob. So, um, again, it's a very visionary, very sort of aspirational approach to a plan and, and wading into areas that we may not have had a lot of experience with. But in the spirit of creating a plan that's really in the best interest of the whole city, here's a scenario. If a developer or, or, or a consortium of developers comes forward and had a plan or a proposal for the site, that in the end, we generally, so call the council, the planning commission, whoever, whoever would, would be on the hot seat first, considered a real plus and, and, and addition to the city, a positive addition to the city, but may not exactly fit in exactly to the constraints of this master plan. There are vehicles and opportunities to, to, to make that work, right?
Um, the, the, that's a two, two ways to look at this. Again, the land use article is pretty clear in some ways, you know, the, the legislative body and the planning commission body can sort of determine on, basically with master plans, you know, what conformance means. The only thing that again are binding elements that would really lock something in are the special conditions. So if a plan came in and did not reflect the special conditions, in order to move forward with that plan, we would have to amend the master plan. But as we said, you know, once again, you know, master plans are meant to be amended. Um, you know, obviously we wouldn't want to be doing this effort again in a year, but you, you know, situations being what they are. But, but outside of the special conditions, again, the land use article, you know, the proportionality, conformance, compliance, you know, that, that's sort of a gray area that can somewhat be determined, uh, by council and planning commission.
But I think the short answer is there is a vehicle by which this can be amended it, with a compelling enough reason. It's not as if this is now the, the last and final, um, look and say on the site.
Mm-hmm. Hence why, why we redid map designation 35, you know, relooking at, you know, what was said for this site, you know, in the last land use element.
Yeah, good point, good point. Uh, okay. Um, now, let me ask another question of, of the commissioners. One, we had, I think, two or three major points that came up after our joint public hearing. And I'll do it in no particular, but when it comes to the gap housing definition and a working understanding of what it is, um, do you think we've captured in this version? Has everybody satisfied with that? Okay, no concerns. Okay. Um, and then on the, um, the actual caps and, and, you know, min, minz and maxes that have now emerged for housing, for commercial, for, um, restandal and retail, everybody comfortable with, with, with those, um, with those numbers now?
Yeah, there's, there's a good balance there, John.
Okay.
Yes, I like the way you used, um, the range on some and the minimum and the maximum. Um, it was very creative to try to fit in, um, the product types as well as you could.
Excellent. Okay. Um, and then everybody comfortable with, um, the, uh, the graphic representation of how the distribution of different types of development ends up kind of impacting the site. That, that all makes sense? Okay, good.
At this point, yes.
Okay, good. Um, all right, good. And, and I think that was it, Rob. Those were the major points that came out of, um, our joint work session, right?
Yeah, it was really, those were the, really the, all the special conditions. The other special conditions, um, that are in the plan, you know, deal with prohibited commercial uses, you know, ones that obviously don't fit within the vision or goals.
Sure, sure.
Um, that, that, so it really wasn't up, the preclusion of single-family detached homes. Um, that's a special condition. And then the other one that wasn't up for debate that we received support for during the public hearing, because we discussed it then, was the associated point seven five on-street parking spaces associated with 16, you know, under 20-foot wide townhomes. As a livability aspect.
Yeah, I was actually focused more on those open issues that ended up driving the need for the pub, for the, uh, joint work session that followed up the hearing. It was just those two or three items. So, um, what are your concerns, questions? Um, any reason not to move forward with a, with a recommendation of our council?
Yep.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm getting a message that my internet connection is, uh, stable. Uh, I'm, I'm sure it's no, uh, uh, Rob, the recommendation is that we, we do two, two, uh, two motions, right?
So the first motion again deals with the first planning commission resolution, which deals with the master plan itself. The second motion is for the planning commission resolution, and that deals with the special conditions.
Special conditions. Okay, good. All right, uh, commissioners, is there a motion, please, on the master plan amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission approve resolution PCR 121, approving MP121, the Lake Forest Mall master plan, an amendment to 2009 land use element, and recommending adoption by the mayor and city council.
Second.
Second.
I'm gonna share.
Yeah, right. By, by a tenth of a second.
There, I guess the second on that, on that one. All right, very good. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimously, thank you. Is there a?
Mr. Chairman.
On the special conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission approve resolution PCR dash two dash 2021, approving the special conditions associated with MP-121, the Lake Forest Mall master plan, recommending adoption by the mayor and city council.
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call, vote again. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Rob, great work. I think we've come to the the logical and satisfying conclusion of this process.
Great. Thank you, commissioners.
Rob, thanks for your hard work. This was amazing.
Uh, again, as we said during the public hearing and the work session, we appreciate, uh, the work and the time that the various planning commissioners gave throughout this process. And again, the, the clear guidance received in this compressed time, uh, from the council and the planning commission in helping us to get the revised draft completed.
And Kirk.
Yeah, nice work. It's not often you use the terms clear and concise when talking about us, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Um, that'll, that'll move us on into our site plan agenda, and we have one of those tonight for SP-8848-2021, construction of 495,000 square feet of commercial development and associated infrastructure. Uh, 1.87 acre linear park and parking waiver at 700 North Frederick Avenue, the MXD mixed-use development zone. Um, and this is a final site plan, and it looks like Caroline's presenting from staff. Is that right, Caroline? Thank you. I didn't have that note. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, we can put up packet page 642. Uh, this is a final site plan review of SP 8848, 2021, submitted by Brian Morris of MFV 700 NFA LLC and DNIP4LLE, otherwise known as Matton Incorporated, on March 30th, 2021. The final site plan is the first phase of multiple final site plans anticipated to fulfill schematic development plan SDP 8597, 2020, approved by the mayor and. approved by the mayor and city council, March fifteenth, twenty twenty one by resolution R fifteen twenty one. Uh, if we can go to packet page six forty five, please. The subject property is in the middle of the screen, located at seven hundred North Frederick Avenue. Property is bounded by North Frederick Avenue to the north, Montgomery Village Avenue to the southeast, I two seventy to the southwest, and a FedEx distribution center to the northwest. And uh, for anybody that is new to this uh, property, the site was originally developed for IBM and was most recently vacated by Leidos. The application requests approval for four hundred and ninety five thousand square feet of commercial development and associated infrastructure, including a linear park along North Frederick Avenue. The site plan encompasses thirty five point nine two acres of the forty three point nine six acre site. Many of the features proposed as part of the S D P are incorporated in the current site plan, including all the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, a one point eight seven acre linear park, two employee amenity areas adjacent to lots five and six, a truck court with parking, and a eight point one eight six acre naturalized area. The applicant is also requesting a parking waiver of the parking lot landscape requirements as part of the final site plan. If you go forward with this, this would require a separate motion at the end. And here tonight to begin the applicant's presentation is Brian Morris of Matten Companies. I will turn it over to him, and if we can go back to the beginning of his uh, presentation, that's on page six forty three.
Great. Thank you, Caroline. Um, first of all, I just want to thank Caroline and staff for wonderful effort that they put together with us and just working through this process. So I just wanted to thank them for that. Um, so next slide, please. So this is uh, the team. So you got myself, Brian Morris, uh, and Carl Morris with the Matten Companies. Vika is the civil engineer and landscape architect. Miles in Stockbridge, our land use council, and our architect is Powers Brown. Next slide, please. I won't um, reiterate what Caroline said, but um, just to kind of touch on the location here, just briefly, and the fact that the site is located very close to a diverse range of commercial uses that exist there today with offices. Um, like Caroline said, the warehouse distribution facility to the north, restaurants, a lot of other services. So it really is conveniently located to um, you know, that existing infrastructure and services provided as well as the new interchange at Watkins Mill to the north and um, the interchange to the south that the property is located near. Next slide, please. Uh, just again, kind of dropping the site plan into the proposed uh, kind of context of um, the overall air plan here. Uh, just wanted to touch briefly on that. The staff report mentioned that in nineteen ninety seven, the neighborhood land um, or neighborhood six land use plan recommended that the site would be um, commercial industrial research office um, land use designation and rezoning it to M X D, which that's currently what the property is in today. So um, as it went through the process in two thousand one, um, the Frederick Avenue corridor land use plan, as well as both the two thousand three and two thousand nine land use plans, both reaffirmed the ninety seven plan. So um, what you'll see as we go through the different approvals this evening, and then what we're proposing and showing you tonight with the final site plan, that it really, this application really is consistent with the city's vision uh, of the overall site and, you know, quite frankly, of kind of what we're seeing today in today's market. Next slide, please. So again, just kind of touching on the uh, different approvals of the site. So here we have the sketch plan that was approved in August of twenty nineteen for the forty four acre site, which uh, the sketch plan allows for up to six hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial density. Uh, so this plan also does permit ten percent or sixty five thousand square feet of retail uses or up to a hundred percent of employment, office, and other commercial industrial uses. So uh, the sketch plan did establish a linear park along the front edge of the property along uh, three fifty five, as well as the green space and open space along Montgomery Village Avenue and I two seventy. Next slide, please. Uh, the next approval was the most recent one here in March of this year, where we got the phase one schematic development plan approved, uh, which was roughly thirty nine acres of the entire site. Uh, so this plan permitted up to four hundred and sixty one thousand square feet, uh, four hundred sixty one, one hundred thousand square feet of commercial employment, industrial uh, development, uh, which also established the recreation uh, and open space on the property, and then the infrastructure with inside the development. So again, just um, with the uses that um, are consistent with the land use, um, that's what this schematic development plan recommended and um, was approved with as well with light manufacturing, research and development laboratories, office, uh, distribution warehousing, and others. Next slide, please. So before you tonight, uh, this really is the centerpiece of the development, which is uh, the phase one final site plan, which includes the two flex buildings there on lots five and six. So really, just to stress again, this project really is capitalizing on the property's location and establish corridor by replacing an obsolete structure that's, you know, uh, faking today and is actually being demolished as we speak. Um, and really, we're creating a modern employment hub near existing residences, commercial uses, and transportation that exists there. So given the market demand that we've seen recently, uh, with the low vacancy rates in this product, you know, speed to market is critical and key to really staying relevant in this booming uh, market sectors uh, that we touched about as far as like the approved uses. So, you know, we're seeing that in the life sciences warehouse, wholesale, or research and development. So we're seeing a huge boom into in in this uh, sector. So this first phase really you know, caters to that. So it's, you'll see a lot of five and six, the two buildings are a total of four hundred and ninety five thousand square feet of this flexible space again to accommodate those uses. So also in this first phase, uh, again, it includes that linear park along North Frederick Avenue, the open green spaces uh, as well as the internal road network, and then the new uh, right in, right out onto three fifty five. Uh, just to note, the parcels along the front edge of the property, they will have their own site plan. They're not part of this application this evening. Uh, but just, I would like to note that lot four on the corner of three fifty five and Montgomery Village Avenue has been submitted uh, as being reviewed by staff right now, and lot one, uh, which is uh, adjacent to the main intersection where the light is, uh, will be submitted here shortly. Next slide, please. So as Carolyn touched on, uh, we are requesting a parking waiver, but really this only arises from the parking in the shared truck court, which is a uh, blue outlined area in between the two flex buildings there. So as you know, the required um, green parking area um, or the parking lot green area is ten percent. So we are exceeding that on the two parking lots in front of the flex buildings. Uh, however, we are requesting that waiver um, in the middle, uh, which is a seven percent. Um, we're requesting the waiver on seven percent of that. So you'll notice again, the majority of the parking is situated in the fronts of the buildings where this is where um, includes uh, electrical vehicle charging spaces, uh, motorcycle spaces, bike facilities, and also the required uh, ADA spaces. So since these two parking lots um, don't meet the overall um, parking ratio uh, for the two lots, uh, we did have to provide seventy spaces, which are again situated within that truck court. So it's important to note that our S D P does allow for the potential incorporation of additional parking spaces um, in the truck court to meet future market, market demand. So we have submitted a justification letter uh, for that. That was approved on our previous S D P. But also, um, it's important to note that this is a speculative development. So having the flexibility to locate the parking in the truck court does help meet market demands. Um, so if we were to create landscape islands, um, in order to meet the granite, green area, this really would limit the flexibility of that parking as well as would limit um, and conflict with safe vehicular and truck turning movements. So overall, um, with the ten percent uh, parking light area, we are meeting ninety percent of it um, in total uh, for all the parking spaces. So I think it's also important to note too that within the M X D zone, you are required to provide twenty five percent uh, overall green area, uh, which is roughly nine acres. So this project is actually providing significantly more than that, which it's providing roughly sixteen acres or forty four percent of that green area. So it is above and beyond that. Next slide, please. So the site circulation, um, is really, you know, alludes to the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, um, and it really has remained unchanged from the the S D P that was approved, uh, for the exception of a added pedestrian connection to a bus stop on Montgomery Village Avenue. So the primary point of access still is the existing full movement signalized intersection was, which is that center light that you see on the screen. Uh, and then we are providing a secondary access onto three fifty five, which is the right in, right out, uh, which is that access point to the left of your screen or um, would be to the north of that prop, of the property. You also notice that as far as pedestrian connections, it's going to be greatly enhanced than what's there today. Uh, it's today, it's closed off. Uh, so now you'll be able to have these pedestrians access points that meander along the linear park, and then also create inviting experience into the site, which would be safe, um, and and very convenient to the individual lot. So we'll touch on those a little bit later in our presentation. Next slide, please. So here's the technical building elevations. Um, and so we'll go through these pretty quick, but the, you know, the the buildings are mere images of each other. So we're only showing one at a time. Um, but really, these designs, they convey a contemporary style, uh, really to increase the visual interests through uh, various building articulation to reduce the um, mass bulk and uniformity. So the material that's included on the buildings is a stone veneer that will be at the base of the buildings uh, for that pedestrian experience, as well as at the tenant entrances, and then the tenant entrances are popped up uh, with cam- canopies. Uh, that also include wood louver slats, horizontal form liners, and tinted glazing. So next slide, please. These are just images of the back of the building. Um, next slide, please. So we'll get into the renderings of what these buildings actually will look like. So this is the main entrance coming down. So this is the east elevation of the site, and as you can see that they are enhanced with the stone glazing and form liners, again, to create an inviting entrance coming into the site um, on the sides of of the building elevations. Next slide, please. Here's an image, um, again, of that east elevation that shows the corner of the main entrance. Um, you can see the, the um, you louvered slats, the wood louvered slats there with the um, with the stone and the and the pop ups on the corner uh, with the canopies. Next slide, please. So this is the main tenant entrance uh, that you would see on the corners of the buildings. Again, creating that pedestrian articulation as it goes along the building, uh, really just breaking up the uniformity and mass of the of these structures. Next slide, please. And this is an angle of looking at um, another tenant entrance along the the fronts of the buildings. Next slide, please. So again, touching base, um, a little bit on the linear park. This is a um, aerial view of what the linear park would look like um, along Montgomery Village Avenue and three fifty five. Um, so this corner is the public art uh, that really creates a sense of place and it defines the intersection um, as really as a gateway to the project, but also to the this corridor uh, coming down three fifty five. Next slide, please. So this linear park really is a continuation of what happened up at in front of FedEx, um, you know, down in the front of our property. Um, it's roughly fourteen hundred linear feet. Um, and again, it's just meandering paths. Um, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, that creates, um, you know, we have the seating, various plantings, uh, shade trees. So um, the the treatments and materials here are really at a pedestrian scale again, to create a more inviting um, experience down through fifty five and, you know, helping to create these entrances into the site. Um, really, again, just it's all about the experience for the pedestrians uh, along there. Next slide, please. And again, this is just a uh, an image of the gateway or public art piece. So uh, we're currently working through um, the design of that. And um, again, it's the condition of of our site plan that will uh, finalize that as we go through. Next slide, please. Here's uh, the first employee amenity area. Um, so these areas really do a great job of couple of things. One, integrating the stormwater management facilities, uh, where we've actually created pedestrian walkways that bridge over these facilities that link you to the various open lawn spaces, which in effect create kind of garden rooms uh, for the employees, employees to lounge and, you know, take breaks, enjoy company activities and recreation. So uh, it really is a nice feature uh, for the employees. Next slide, please. And this is the second employee amenity area, uh, which is uh, smaller, but again, still generous in size. This one has amphitheater style seating. Um, but you know, again, really, both of these uh, employee many the areas are desirable locations for employees. Um, again, to relax, work outdoors, and have enough space, um, you know, especially in this post COVID world um, air that, you know, they'll be able to um, again, just enjoy that space outside. And, you know, who knows how long this may be with us. So uh, we thought it was very important to really enhance these amenity areas for the future employees. So next slide, please. So that's the end of the, our presentation. Uh, so again, I just wanted to thank staff for all their hard work and working with us. And um, you know, we agree with the findings and recommendations that are in the the staff report, and we consent with the, with the, with the condition. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That was a uh, nice, nicely done presentations, uh, presentation. Uh, commissioners, any questions for the applicant's team?
Yes, yes, I have some. Um, just, just, I just wanted a little clarification on the, the parking waiver, but it's it's about green space and not actual spots, correct?
That is correct.
But you, and you also talked about, I guess, later on, if need be, you you might add spaces if you need them. I wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, so as part of our uh, schematic development plan, there's a note on the plan that allows for the incorporation of additional parking spaces if needed. That would allow us to go through a uh, staff level review on that. Um, but if we were to exceed the parking spaces that we're providing here today, we would have to get amended final site plan. But um, at least we want, we want to have to go back to the S D P process.
Is that true, Greg? Or Caroline, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, i- if they um, need to add parking spaces and it's below a certain percentage of the required spaces, we could do it at a staff level if they're doing something to that changes the site plan in such a way that it needs to come back to the planning commission, then it would come back to you for review. But um, there's also the flexibility with those seventy spaces in the court to simply move them around the truck court. And that may have been what some of this reference is to adjusting the parking depending on their tenant.
Right, right. I know speculative, and that's why I asked the question.
Right.
So that would give them some flexibility based on the 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 final tenant or whatever.
Right. So some of those.
That's good.
Might shift within the truck court, and as long as they can demonstrate that the truck turning movement still function, that's something we could take care of at a staff level.
Well, oh, good. I'm glad that they have that flexibility. I, they did have one more question about the, one of the last things you said. And you said something about that employee, um, kind of like recreation area, you said, until it lasts or or it might go away. Can you just explain that a little bit?
I think I, I was referring to this post COVID air. So uh, obviously, it's, it's here to stay for a little while since we're on Zoom. So we'll see what happens.
It looks like you were saying you're going to give them this nice thing, and then as soon as they move in, snatch it away.
No, no, no. Now, the plenty many areas will stay.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other, we will get to the public for testimony if anybody is waiting um, to do that. But I'm going to get through the questions first. So Sharon, please.
Um, the green space um, and the employee amenity area that Danny was just talking about, is that actually grass or is that turf?
It is grass.
Well, grass, okay.
Phil?
I had a couple of questions. One, on on the parking in the center truck court, and it may have been in the elevations. With every With every suite, is there a mandor as well as the truck doors facing into that center truck court?
Yes. Yeah, we do have mandors in the back.
So my, I don't have a huge concern about the green way, green space waiver, because if you didn't park any cars back there, you'd still have a giant sea of asphalt. The whole intent of that of that portion of the code is to keep parking lots from being a sea of asphalt. And the only reason we're talking about it is because we're painting some stripes on asphalt that would already be there. My bigger concern with that truck court is, you know, I've, I've visited a number of businesses who are in these sort of much older, you know, types of developments. And if they're a type of business that's not getting frequent truck deliveries, what happens is employees end up parking in front of the truck bays, whether they're striping there or not, and they become a total mess. And so my question, since this is the question phase of, of our evening is what, how are you going to control that to, to keep tenants from and employees? Because it's really nice when there's a mandor right next to, you know, right off a truck bed, you can pull your car five feet from it. Whether they're striping there or not, how do you, how are you going to keep that from becoming a mess? With people parking wherever they want behind their bay if they're not getting a truck delivery?
Yeah. So we manage all our properties and we have property management on site that will help regulate that. So they're not that's not like a parking officer, but they will help manage that. So that does not occur. So we do that with all our properties.
Okay. My next question, tech team, could you pull up packet page six sixty? And it has to do with the, the linear park and the absolutely enticing images that you showed. Just once in my career on the planning commission, I would love an applicant to come in and present a rendering of landscaping that shows what it's going to look like the week after the project is done. So my question is, these lovely eighteen inch, you know, thirty foot tall trees, how tall are they going to be when this is done? And for the first five to 10 years after this is over?
So they will be, they're shade trees, so they will get pretty tall. And I'd have to
But, but how tall will they be when they're installed? I believe that it'll look like this at some point during your ownership of the building. I want to know, you know, you know, because we're relying on this landscape buffer to do two things. One, it's to make the path inviting, but a huge part of it is to screen the building from three fifty five and to soften that edge.
Yeah, Mr. Wessel, this is Carl Morris. Caroline, I don't know if you can pull up, I'm trying to scroll, scroll through it, but my computer's not that fast. There is a full set of landscaping plans in your packet that identify the species of the tree, the caliber of the tree that will be planted day one. We can certainly provide you backup information as to, you know, mature, what this mature tree would look like.
I have, I have zero concerns about what the mature tree is going to look like. I have every confidence it's going to look great when it's mature. It's what is the condition that the city and the people walking down, down there are going to be stuck with in the fifteen years it's going to take the tree to go from when it's planted to when it's mature.
Right. And that's my point. There in, in your packet is the landscaping package that there's a table in there that introduces or identifies the species of the tree along with the cow.
Yeah. So Bika just texted me. So twelve to fourteen feet is what they'll be installed at.
Okay.
The height of them.
Phil, for the purposes of this presentation and the, and the Q and A right now, do you want to have a quick look at the landscape plan just to kind of bounce your question off of, or are you good at answering?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find it. I, I can, I can go pull it up while we move on to other things. My, my one and only other question was the, the, the first employee amenity on page six sixty two, where you have sort of the grass lawns. You showed a bunch of loose landscaping furniture sort of out in the lawn. There were two, there were two sort of zones. There's, you've got furniture on the, whether it's gravel or concrete, and then you've got tables and chairs sprinkled along the, you know, in, in the grass. Is that, and what looks like cornhole and maybe some yoga mats, is that actually a proposal or is this creative entourage to liven up a rendering?
So the, yeah, so within the green area, those are additional seating in the cornhole. It, it's just to kind of represent what companies can do inside. But on the actual asphalt or the pavement where the tables and chairs and benches are, those will be actual.
Okay. So anything within the green area is assumed to be tenant, provided the, the landscape furniture on the sidewalk is part of your proposal.
That's correct.
All right. That's helpful to understand because I could see your mower guy picking those chairs up and chucking them into the parking lot the first time he has to mower them.
No, he wouldn't do that.
Never, never. All right. That's, I'll go look at the landscape plan while we talk about some other things, but that's the extent of my questions.
All right, great. It looks like it starts at eight ninety nine.
The, the landscape plan, actually it's a fifty page set, so I'm having trouble identifying the right page because my iPad keeps crashing as I scroll unfortunately, but it does start on page seven hundred and seventy six, I believe, but
Yep, I, I found it.
We'd have, we'd have to identify a specific page after that to pull up for the
Give, give me a minute or two, I'll find it.
Yeah, but like we did spec two and a half to three inch caliber trees that will be installed at twelve to fourteen feet in height. And, um, they average roughly about a foot of growth per year after that.
Okay. I think it'll be as important to understand that, Phil, as you're looking at the plan, how many layers of that there are in that as well. So understanding that there's some you're obscuring the view, not only with height and mass, but also because there's, there's some density to it, working its way back toward the road. So take a look at that and we'll, we'll get back to that in the discussion, I think. Lloyd, you had your hand up, please.
Thank you. One of the nice features about this project is taking down the fence that currently exists along both the Montgomery Village Avenue and other, other sections. Uh, my question is, the public will have access to some of the employee amenities as well, like the amphitheater, for instance, or even these green spaces that Bill was discussing? Or will those be restricted only to the employees?
And so the employee many of the areas are designed specific for the employees, but as far as like the linear park in the front, that's open to the public for sure.
My other question is, and it's not necessarily relevant at this particular time, but my concern is that you're going to have these four lots in front of the main buildings. And they will be, if you will, buffering between three fifty five and the main facilities. Uh, I know we're not looking at any sign package at this point, but have you considered how you would have wayfinding and signage with all those things going on in the front on three fifty five? And trying to direct people or vehicles into the property?
Yes, actually, part of our SDP application, we had a signage package approved that included wayfinding signage. And we have locked up some plans and that's, that's part of it.
That we will see that in the package that we're currently looking at. Is that correct?
It's not in the package for this. It was approved as part of the SDP and was a part of the design guidelines.
Okay.
So they, they just need to come in for individual signed permits at this point.
And that includes individual tenants within those large buildings as well as the main entrance into the facilities.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? I have a couple myself, but I wanted to give you all a chance before I chimed in. All right. So let me, let me cover a couple of things in no particular order. The landscaping buffer, the linear park and, and to whatever extent the, the new landscaping is buffering the, the building. Right now, there's also a berm in front of some of the newer stuff there. Is that, will that continue to be, will topography continue to be part of that? Are you flattening out or will you end up with essentially uh, no change in elevation from the curb heading on back to the, to the building? So in other words, there's a linear park, I mean, contrary to it, any, any topography changes that helps to buffer the, the view.
Yeah. So it, it will, um, from the curb kind of back, it will slope down slightly. Just that berm will kind of come down a little bit, but the existing topography will essentially stay the same.
So there will be a, a little bit of a screening effect or, or obscuring of the view because from the curb back, there'll be a rise and then it'll drop back down to the pad sites and to the rest of the site. Is that fair?
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's basically a roughly a four to, two to four foot elevation from curb to site.
Are you describing a draw or a rise?
I mean, it's, it's a gentle roll.
Okay. Right. But what right now, I believe in front of FedEx, or at least what used to be down toward FedEx and the hotel site non or is a bit of a berm that screened the view looking back into the site? Am I wrong about that? Maybe Caroline, you could jump in here.
I, I think it's slightly elevated at the, at North Frederick Avenue and but not a lot.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's hold that thought. That can be part of the discussion. Also, Phil was getting news about the question about parking and how, how do you think Heidi in the truck court wants some listening sort of take off and, and you have multiple tenants. The other piece to that is where, where do dumpsters end up? Where does some of the, the service stuff end up in, in, on this site?
So they would be, so there's that screen wall that's on the kind of east side of the, the building. So if you pull up.
Because again, and just sort of anecdotal ways, you know, we've all been to kind of quasi industrial parks that have got some age on it and there are dumpsters parked in all, all kinds of ways out in the middle of the some of those courts that belong in different ways to the different, different tenants. Or, or containers for auxiliary storage, things like that.
Yeah, typically it's, it's, they're tucked up against the building where the, the dock door would be. And there is the screen wall. Right along progressway, the internal drive there. So all that would be screened, the truck court is screened visually from three fifty five and everything else.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and show, can you, can you cite one of the plans and go ahead and show that how, how those are positioned with those screens?
Have you got a six forty nine? Just at the top of the buildings, that you see the, the parallel road to three fifty five. There's a screen wall there and landscaping that screens the truck court.
No, I understand, but, but where, where, where do you manage all of the dumpsters and all of the, you know, because there's going to be quite a bit of that to deal with on a site like this with that much square footage.
So they would be tucked up against the, the back of the, of, of the building.
In the truck court.
In the truck court, correct.
Correct. Up against the dock. So basically what they would do is take a dock space. And typically these dumpsters are self-contained. And they'll have one for recycling and one for trash.
Are, are you designating spaces for them or is that really up to the tenants to decide?
Yeah, it, it really is dependent on the tenant and their layout. And we, we just don't know that. That, again, that's why we're looking for as much flexibility as possible because those dock doors could service a recycling container or it could be a dock door. We just don't know at this point.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay. Now, in the presentation, I, what I didn't see, and hopefully you've got an exhibit buried somewhere in the, in your, your documentation. Do you have a view of what the screen to the truck court looks like? And what it's made out of and how it works and what it really all is?
So if you go to six fifty four. There is a screen wall there on the left side of the building there. It's a twenty foot high screen wall.
Yeah, this is a conceptual drawing. I'm, I'm looking for something more specific and detailed.
If you want to go back to six fifty three, that, that shows it on the building elevation. The bottom. I don't know if we can, can we zoom in on these? I'm not sure if we can. They're right there.
This is sort of
There you go.
But it's, um, yeah, that's it there with the form liner.
Okay. But how, is there a gate? Is there a, how does, what does it look like when it's in that space? And that only shows a little piece of it.
So it extends out from the building.
Yeah. On the corner of the building itself.
Right. But, you know, so let me ask this, is there a gate or is it just an opening?
Yeah, if you go, Caroline, go to, um.
There, there's no, there's no gate. I, there's just, there's two walls, one on either side, one on each building with an opening between them.
Right. For the, for the entrance into the truck court. So the screen walls extend out from the building to hide first fifty feet or whatever it is.
Okay. Hey, Caroline, can you go to seven sixty six?
If, if the tech team can do it, I can.
I think this is what you're getting at, John, maybe. My computer's a little slow. But if you look on the top left-hand corner, and it's hard to see, but there's a dark line. That's the screen wall.
Right.
And your trucks come in between that screen wall.
No, no, I, I understand and plan it. But again, it's very diagrammatic. I'm, I'm looking for a little more information about what it's made out of, what it looks like, what, what's
Yeah, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a tilt up panel. So and it's, how tall is it, Brian? It's roughly fourteen feet?
It's twenty feet, fifty feet long. It's got, it's the concrete panel that has form liner. So it has articulation in the panel and it's painted the same color as the building.
Okay. And it just ends, there's no, you know, I don't know decorative column. There's no sort of edge to it. It just, it's just the edge of the, edge of the tilt up panel. And that's, that's it.
Correct. Yeah. We'll have landscaping in front of it.
Okay.
As well.
Okay. Good. Now, clarification on the linear park is that, does that remain private property? Does that end up being dedicated to become a city park?
Yeah, it's still private property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So we'll have a, a four season on it, but, or, yeah, an easement on it, but it is private property that we will maintain.
Okay. And then one more time, just, would you revisit, please, the elevations? Now, I'm going to get north and south wrong because I'm I think you said east and west, but I'm thinking north and south. But nevertheless, building A, which I believe is the building farther from Quinn's Orchard Road and building B, which is closest Quin's Orchard Road. The two elevations on the outer side, so are they different? Or I should say comparable or, or different because obviously they're, they're different because they're different sizes of the building. But when I was looking at the, at the presentation, you almost appeared to be pointing to a corner that didn't actually line up with the geometry with, with, with the rendering set. So now I'm curious what it really looks like. So essentially the long public sides of A and B.
Yeah, sorry, you're, we're breaking up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Caroline, why don't we go to six fifty six? Our tech team. Think this might.
Okay. So hold that image in your head. We're just, you know, burning into your brain for a minute. Now do the comparable side on the other bill on building A, essentially the north side of building A.
So they, they're mirror images of each other, the buildings. So yeah, they are, and they look identical.
Okay.
I think, John, what, if, if you're thinking, if, if I think I know what you're reacting to, if you go back to six fifty four, keep this image in your mind and then go to page six fifty four. Tech team, can you go to six fifty four? Just scroll back. So this is the image you see when you enter the site, like you've got the, the, what frankly, I think was a really nice What frankly, I think was a really nice elevation. Facing Quinn's Orchard up on a hill behind some trees, but. Anybody coming to the site, whether they're coming to these buildings or whether they're coming to a building on the pad site is going to enter with this view, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so I want to I want to discuss that later, but there's another view where you had the little arrow pointing to the corner of and if you look at your key plan up above the right. You had an elevation that was keyed to that plan where the the arrow was pointing from the upper right hand corner.
That that's in the next page, six fifty five, if we can go to that. Is that?
Correct.
I think we may have lost Chair Bauer.
So if I can, if I can pick up Chair Bauer's line of questioning here. I.
There it is. Okay.
Yeah. You you froze for a second.
I'm sorry. I'm back. I think I think I lost a connection or something. I'm sorry. Anyway, so yeah, this view right here. This is very misleading because. You're you're saying essentially that the long side, it it's sort of flipped, but this really isn't the long side. This is the side you see coming onto the site. That's very deceiving. And and that's okay. I mean, I'm just sort of clarifying right now, but if what's off to the right that you don't see in this this perspective, the long side of the building, you're saying is a mirror image of Building B.
Yeah, both both the buildings are mirror images of each other.
Okay, very good. All right, so I got that clarified. All right, that's my questions. I'll get into the discussion later. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. All right, so let's. Let's go to I'm gonna. There are some folks under the attendees tab. I'm not entirely sure. If they're connected to our apps tonight, or if there's some from some for the public. So tech team, would you play the public hearing instructions?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right, great. So let me give it a second and look at the attendees list and see if any hands go up. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so. Excellent. All right, let's um Caroline, let's move to the the recommendation, please.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
All right, there actually be two recommendations. As I said before, ones for the parking waiver, but staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant SP eight eight four eight twenty twenty one and ENV eight eight five oh twenty twenty one, which is the final forest conservation plan. Final site plan approval, finding it in conformance with sections twenty four dash one seventy and twenty four one seventy one of the city zoning ordinance. With seven conditions that are included in your package.
All right, great. Thank you.
You want me to do the other or for the parking waiver?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant a parking waiver of section twenty four dash two twenty E of the city zoning ordinance. For a waiver of the parking lot landscape requirements, finding it in conformance with section twenty four dash two twenty two.
Thanks, Caroline. We're getting some some interference from somebody's microphone. So definitely drank something over their microphone. All right, commissioners, let's 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 get into the discussion mode. I don't I still don't see any hands from the public, so. Let me open it up with first site planning issues and then we can look at the look at the architecture of the building if that's okay with you. I think the two big issues that I'd want to put on the table for discussion first is. Thinking about the linear park, thinking about the contour of the linear park is another opportunity to scale and obscure the view a little bit and and create a little bit of visual separation. You know, great examples of that exist around the city. We've got, you know, a new park over on in Quinn's Orchard Park with with a little bit of a of a shape to it around the around the edges that just, you know, helps to. Not only screen the view because it's a berm, it's actually a physical physical barrier, but it also puts some real interest to the landscaping. In a way that, you know, helps it sort of cascade down and and look a little nicer. Want to I want to put that on the table. The other is, I think. The glaring component is that that. Really strong axial entrance into the site that the double the double lane, you know, sort of boulevard entrance. Dies into a relatively undeveloped elevation of the building. So in terms of a focus or a or a a terminus of that view. And I'm not sure is the most flattering. View of the building as nice as the sides look that are that are facing the public entrances. Unfortunately, I don't think you carried it through on the on the arrival component, you know, probably car arrival from from the street. So I think there needs to be some work there. And then the the material at the at the the screen, I think. During the during the SDP stage, we were talking about a a truck court and the concept of having that somewhat of back a house sort of. Thing and then trying to orient the public to the outside edges of the building, really trying to think think of this as a little bit more than just a a traditional R and D kind of kind of service space. Kind of going along with the idea, the elevation facing Frederick Avenue probably also needs to take a little bit more care and how the screen wall is is developed at the at the truck court. So those are my those are my four questions or four issues to discuss. Commissioners, please jump in. Anything else you want to add to that list or anything you want to want to? Continue on those.
Right, Chair Bauer, I think. I sort of agree pretty much that the two only like real issues I have with with what we've seen today are. You know, one is the landscaping along this park, and I've been going over the landscape plan and and you have three to five inch caliper of the trees is. Is what shown on the plan. Some of them are shown, you know, some of the cedars are shown at six to eight feet. You know, it is going to be, I I don't think we're going to get anything close to the amount of screening. There is a fair amount of layering with trees and shrubs of different types. But even our shrub, you're looking at a three to five gallon shrub that's going to be two feet tall. And so. The the time that it's going to take to get the what we are seeing in the landscape plans and those renderings. It it it's not going to be that inviting of a place to walk for for quite some time. And so, you know, my. In in just about every species that you've selected. In the five minutes I've been, you know, looking, there are locally available trees in almost double or sometimes triple the caliper and height for for the species you all have picked. And so. It seems to me that. That would go a long way towards, you know, making the park and making that edge of the site a lot more pleasant and and closer to achieving the goal on day one is to simply increase the caliber and heights of the trees that you're purchasing. Aside from that. The experience, especially looking at the pad sites and knowing that we've got. Site plans in the works for at least two of those pad sites. That are very much public focused. Likely retail food and beverage, some some sort of. You know. Relatively high volume, you know, public facing restaurant or or retail. You we're going to be pulling a whole lot of people down that main entrance and. They're going to they're going to stop, you know, thirty feet from the face of the building and turn left or right to go to wherever they're headed. And so that elevation is frankly at just it needs to have just the the same level of design and importance as the two that face. You know, face either side. And and right now it doesn't. The the point about the screen wall, I think. That John picked up on is is right on. If if my if my measurements in Blue Beam are correct, there's about a hundred foot gap between the screen wall. For about a. I think a sixty foot road. So your your driveway is a little bit less than sixty feet, yet the gap between the ends of the screen wall is a hundred. So. Frankly, for people coming in as they come down that main road, if they turn left. They're not going to be screened for much of anything as they drive right past that opening. So that experience for the folks who. Are coming to those sites is is going to be is really concerning to me.
Bill, can I push back a little?
Yeah, sure.
Is there a continuity between the FedEx property? And this property as far as a sidewalk and the linear park connecting to the front of the FedEx project? Caroline?
The the linear park will continue along from FedEx across. This site is I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but.
Right, so the the what I'm trying to find out is. The FedEx property. Do they have trees shading their sidewalk as one would walk continuing from the linear park continuing down that down that strip? Because if not. Then I I think that Phil's argument becomes moot. At this point.
I mean, I. Go ahead, Caroline, sorry.
I I have to tell you, I I am not as familiar with the landscape plan of the FedEx site as I am with this. I believe that this is more planted than the FedEx site, but.
Yeah. I mean. Lloyd, I I'd say I'm not sure it becomes moot. I don't think it's a continuation of a path, but I don't think we've established some sort of. You know, three fifty five quarter design standard for for landscaping. And so I think my my point and and. I feel like we bring this up on most applications that. Everybody comes in with the eye candy that shows these gorgeous, luscious. Tree line parks. And yet we approve landscape plans that have a two inch or a three inch caliper tree that's not going to look anything like that for twenty years. So. The ability, you're never going to drop in an eighteen inch tree. But. There's a whole lot between two inch caliper and fully grown that could get us a big head start and create something that is. Much more in line with the visuals that the applicants presented in the intent of their plan that we can, you know, start out from day one, and it's not. That big of a of a difference to go from a three inch to a a six inch, you know, in the scope of a project like this.
That's something we don't actually make any demands of previously on any other projects that I've been involved in where, yes, you're right, it is eye candy involved, of course. But we don't have any kind of standard. Whether it's, you know, a warehouse or it's a housing project. So maybe that's something we have to look at in a more of a macro sense than in the micro sense.
Well, let me let me put that to staff. Is there i- is there a threshold or is there a minimum? When reviewing the landscape plans for for the analysis that comes into the final site plan, is there some sense that there's a minimum for? Either the ornamental trees, the shade trees. Strawberry ground cover. Is there is there some sort of a a threshold for those those components?
There is, and I believe it's two inch caliber.
Okay.
And maybe. Caroline, you can help me with this. We. We had design guidelines that were approved at the previous SDP. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, and those design design guidelines included landscape. In the vision that we had for this linear park in the the property itself. So I guess where I'm going with that, Phil, is that. You all approve the the design guidelines and we're just. You know, trying to replicate the design guidelines that have already been approved. The other thing that I would submit to you, Phil, is if you, you know, if you if you go look at other Madden properties. You know, Greg said it correctly. There there are minimum standards. You'll look at Madden properties and we never hit the minimum. We're always the maximum. So we we pay a lot of attention to. The landscaping because we understand the fact that. Our tenants spend a lot of time in our buildings, so we want it to be an inviting. Experience for them. So we have seasonal planting, seasonal flowers. I mean, we really amp it up when it comes to landscaping. So we. We appreciate the comments, but. I think you'll be really, really happy with what the final product's going to look like.
Okay, and I and I absolutely appreciate that that you guys are, you know, putting forth a really, you know, strong effort to make this, you know. For for a industrial property to make it as special as possible and as as well designed as possible. I think what I'm. And and Lloyd, you're right, perhaps this is a larger discussion, you know, we've got a design guideline and, you know, that talks about design vision and what we're trying to get. And we've got a design vision that you all have presented that we're reviewing tonight. In no other aspect of what we review. Do we say that looks great? We'll wait fifteen years to get it. Right? You know, we talk about architecture and some of that is inherent to landscape. I I that that's absolutely. You know, you're you never get what what you. Design on day one, there's it grows and it matures. My only point is. By by having a threshold as low as it is and accepting a a threshold as low as it is when there are. It it's not something that's unusual. It's out there in the nursery stock. It's it's purely. Do you want to do it? And we accept.
I and I appreciate that, and I think. That's why we spend so much time and effort on the design guidelines that you guys approved. Such that we we didn't start here, we started here. So I think if you go back and review the design guidelines, especially the landscaping. You're going to find it's not your standard landscaping package. It's beefed up. Because again, we recognize the fact that. These tenants spend a lot of time in our buildings and we wanted to be a good experience.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here, Mr. Morrison, and just let me get the the commissioners back on a a discussion track. Thank you for for addressing that. Phil, anything else on that that follow up?
Not on the landscape, no.
Okay. Lloyd, did I think we cut you off? Are you done with your your comments? You're fine, you're on mute. Okay, it looks like you said fine. Danny, Sharon, anything you'd like to add, please? Sharon, sure.
No, I just wanted to amplify what you started to talk about earlier, John, about the focus point of when the entry of the building. I think it's actually really lovely. The size of the building are beautiful. I do think that there's a little bit lacking when the when the focus is really the entry point. And we can't see the lovely architecture that's on. You know, when we drive up. My own comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Danny, you're on mute.
Sorry. One good question, and I think I think maybe Lloyd or someone brought it up. That that really nice wrought iron fence that that borders. What is that Montgomery Village Avenue or Quinn's Orchard? I'm not sure, I think. But anyway, is that going to be taken down? That will be removed? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, that was my understanding, Danny. From previous hearings.
That was that was, yeah, wow, I I think it should stay, but I mean, I'm not sure we have any control over that. I mean.
I think Brian should respond. I believe it is staying, actually.
Yeah, okay, good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, I wasn't sure if we were able to respond to that. So the fence is coming down, but we're replacing it with a new fence along Montgomery Village.
Okay, that's great. From a safety perspective, I really I'm really like, I'm really loving to hear that. Okay.
Okay, good clarification. Thank you. Any other comments, Dan? Here's the question, okay. So here's a quick recap, kind of straw poll. I think what I'm hearing is. In terms of comments that may turn into conditions or may enhance the conditions we already have. The, okay, the issue of the whole. Let's call it east elevation, but the elevation facing. Frederick Avenue, Frederick Road, and I I honestly don't know where it changes from road to avenue, but. The the it was such the ends of the building and the screen to the the truck court, that whole composition, but especially what you see when you come down the entry boulevard from. From Frederick. Clearly needs a little bit more, a little bit more work to bring it into line with what's happening on the on the public. Long sides of the the public sides of the building and along sides of building A and B. There's no absolute here. I can't say personally that it would it would look just like those or it would be, you know, turning the corner with the exact simulation, but the point is. I think there needs to be a condition here where you go back and revisit that with staff to be sure that. That presentation of the building and that experience of it is on the same par as coming in on one of the two main corners that that we saw on those those renderings. And that includes the 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 screen wall for the truck court in some way that it. Either the material or the detailing or both and and how much it exposes the truck or all that works together to kind of tie all that tie both of those elevations together. I do think that there should be a bit more care. Again, you know, the the truck court, we want you to be flexible. We get that. And and I think that's okay, but I think there needs to be a strategy in place that we. And I think that's okay, but I think there needs to be a strategy in place that we understand or you can state about things like dumpsters and secondary containers and, you know, what happens out there besides trucks that we've all seen in, not necessarily Madden Development, I'll be perfectly clear, I'm not pinning anything on you, but in buildings, facilities that have a similar kind of program behind them, which is flex R and D warehouse, you know, service space, very often that truck court area, the equivalent to that, can get very, very cluttered with lots of ad hoc things, especially dumpsters and trash and the sort of thing. So maybe a stronger statement about what your strategy is for managing that would help if there is in fact a physical component. I'll let you answer.
John, I think the, the best thing to do would be for me to get you guys in a car, drive you around and have you look at other Madden developments.
No, it's really about this site plan. It's what is the strategy?
I appreciate that. Yeah, and it's, it's a, it's a.
Is the constraint on this?
Yeah, it's managed on a per-tenant basis. So once we understand what the tenant's needs are in the truck court, is when we address it with the tenant. And again, as I said earlier, a lot of these tenants utilize enclosed dumpsters. They're not the, you know, the dumpsters that are wide open. So we pay a lot of attention to the fronts, the backs, the sides of the building to make sure that they are present. So I understand your concern. I think it's a valid concern and that, trust me, is at the top of our list.
You know, if I may, I think that the beauty of a facility like this to the tenant you're attracting is the flexibility to do whatever they need to do. And so, from my perspective, the worst thing we can do here is try and constrain what goes on in that truck court, because that's critical to the tenant's operation. However, the way you deal with that is invest all of your effort into the screening and the architectural treatment so that it doesn't matter what your guys do in there, you know, aside from safety, then you do whatever they want, because it's screened and it doesn't impact the public view. And so that, that would, that's my approach to this, is I don't care where they put their dumpsters in there, as long as it works and it's not a safety issue, as long as the architectural treatment along that facade that the public is going to see every time they drive in there is dealt with. And whether it's even, even so far as, you know, retractable gate that goes across that front entrance that is either, you know, key card or, you know, mag loop operated to get out, so that people coming, the hundreds of thousands of people, if you're lucky, that are coming here every month to visit your other shops, don't have to look at a dumpster, because you're going to see it through the gap. So that, that's my, that's my opinion here, is that we should invest all of our brain cells on the screening and not worry about what goes on in the truck court, because we've screened it really well.
Well, and I appreciate your thoughts, Phil, I do. But we take a little bit more of a proactive approach on managing our buildings. And I think that's one of the reasons that we're probably one of the most successful developers. The tenants appreciate the fact that, you know, if I'm in Building A and I'm looking across at Building B, that it is an organized, you know, organized chaos, let's call it.
I appreciate it, and this is nothing, my comments have nothing to do with Madden and what you will or will not do. It's just the nature of the facility and what goes on there, is that there's a lot of stuff that's going to happen in that truck court that's not, you know, it's what it needs to be for the facility to work. And it's not necessarily what you.
Right, I think. Right, so what we're talking about is a physical site plan approval right now, not an operational plan, not a, you know, none of that. We don't care about the performance, we don't care about your operating model, we don't care about your lease agreements. None of that matters right now. What matters is how the site plan inherently addresses our concerns. And I think, Phil, thank you, you got us right back to the point, which is, with a better facade treatment at the, at the screen wall and with a better sort of overall focus of that side of the building, a lot of this will take care of itself.
I would like to add as well that the city code does require dumpsters to be enclosed on all four sides. So whenever they do decide where those dumpsters were going to go, we would require them to be enclosed.
So it's a code issue?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so commissioners, any other concerns that we should put on the table for discussion? No, anything else? Okay, so do I have agreement that we should get a condition there about enhancing and developing further the elevation, let's call it east or Frederick Avenue facing elevation, including the screen wall?
And for clarifying sakes, are we talking about both A and B, Building A and B, or just Building A?
Well, it's hard to tell, because what we really saw was just conceptual evasions or conceptual perspectives and renderings. I think for sure Building A, the nor, I lost track now, which building is on access when you come in?
A is when you come into the, into the site. B is the one that fronts on Montgomery Village.
Okay, but because there's out parcels with a future use that's very public on the forward portion of the site, I think both are in play. I think the solution has to do with making it make sense when you drive in on that boulevard on Building A. So that means that both ends may not be exactly the same, but they would both be elevated to a, to a quality that would be more commensurate with what's happening on the, on the long sides.
Yep, appreciate that.
Okay, good. Where can we land that? Do you want to add that to as a condition? What can we do with that?
I think we could add that as a condition for both A and B buildings. Caroline, do you have a draft condition?
We can, I was going to suggest that we refer to those elevations as the elevations on Progress Way. That's the name of the private road that they face. That way we don't have to worry about north, south, east and west. But we could, well, I'll give it a stab, applicant to revise Progress Way building elevations for Buildings A and B, including screen walls, to meet same architectural detail and materials as the north and south elevations.
And that's it to work with staff, right?
So that was the next question. Do you want us to work with staff or do you want it to come back to you?
I'm comfortable being at work with staff. Commissioners, you okay with that?
Yeah, and I would, if I can offer a little bit of a suggestion on the wording. I'm not sure we want to stipulate that they, you know, utilize the exact same elements and details, but, you know, the applicant to work with staff and revise the elevation to provide an elevated architectural treatment of similar quality to the other elevation. I just want to be clear that we're not, I mean, I don't want us playing designer and saying, you know, "Take this detail from this door and apply it along this facade." I think the applicant can figure that out and work with staff.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm fine with working with staff.
I agree.
Good clarification. And then let me get back to the Linear Park, the landscaping. Are we, are we satisfied that the, as proposed, conceptual renderings?
John, you froze up.
But focusing instead on the actual landscape plan or the actual site plan for. Can you hear me? Am I moving?
We can hear you.
We kind of lost the first 10 seconds or so.
Okay. On the Linear Park and the question about landscaping, are we satisfied that the landscape plan, the site plan, never mind the conceptual renderings, but that the actual plans of record accomplish the design guidelines and the intended purpose of that Linear Park?
Based on what we've heard from staff, yes.
Yep.
I agree.
So no need for an additional condition or anything there?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, well, and I think the concerns I had are now addressed. Does anybody have anything else they want to include?
Well, I just want to change man door to person door, that's all.
Thanks, Danny.
I think you got a bigger battle to fight than this meeting here.
Yeah, you get into the whole pronoun thing, it's a.
I was just trying to lighten the mood.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Anything else that we need to add to this? So we've proposed, we've got an additional, Caroline, correct me if I'm wrong, we have an additional condition, not a modified condition, correct?
Yes, that will be condition number eight.
Okay, very good. All right, then, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion, please? And by the way, the first is on the, the actual site plan and the environmental application. We'll get to the parking waiver on the second motion. Is there a motion, please?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that based on the exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant SP-8848-2021 and ENV-8850-2021 final site plan approval, finding it in conformance with Sections 28, excuse me, 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with, I believe, did we add in a condition?
Eight conditions.
Yeah, right, eight conditions. Right.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. And let me do the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Kentrell?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And then that takes us into a motion on the parking waiver. Is there a motion, please?
Sharon, please.
No, Danny, you go ahead.
You got it? Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant a parking waiver of Section 24-220 per NE of the city zoning ordinance with a waiver of the parking lot landscape requirements, finding it in conformance with Section 24-222A.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Kentrell?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. All right, thank you all very much. Good luck, it's going to be a good project. We appreciate you're working with us and with staff on some of these details, so.
Yeah, thanks to the Morris Brothers there for their presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks all. All right, that will take us then, that's the end of our regulatory stuff tonight. And that takes us to, from the commission. May I start with you tonight?
Yes, you may. I believe you said my name. I couldn't, you broke up, but.
Oh, am I choppy again? Lloyd, can I start with you on, from the commission?
Nothing else to say, thank you.
Okay. Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me.
All right, Sharon?
Just a question. The Kentlands Market Square is done and it looks like it's turf and kind of interesting the way they designed it. Has there been any feedback, John, on that?
Feedback from whom?
The community, because I know that there's been some texts flying around and some comments in the community, but it hasn't gone into Nextdoor yet, so.
But it doesn't count until it's on Nextdoor.
That's right.
No, I don't go on Nextdoor for a reason, but I'm just giving you a heads up.
I have not gotten many feedback. Has there been opposition from the community?
Yeah, there was a text that came around. People like not thinking it's as attractive as it was before.
Interesting. I don't, I think it looked great.
They want the ice skating rink back.
Pardon?
They want the ice skating rink back.
Well, it's not in the ice skating rink area. That's been, that's actually really popular, but anyways, for the, between facilities and titanium. I'm just glad that it's John.
I sat in the chairs the other night and enjoyed it. It was a nice relaxing spot to hang out and do some people watching.
I was going to say, did you get a tan when you were laying out there in the sun there, John?
No, the rocking, the new rocking chairs. Oh yeah, the rocking chairs are great. Hats off to Kimco for making it a nice space.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it for me.
All right. Danny, anything tonight?
Yeah, I have one serious issue I wanted to bring up and maybe Greg can help me out with it. The, the new Watkins Mill interchange, we love it, we love it, love it, love it, love it. But right there on Clopper Road, at that new intersection of Watkins Mill and Clopper Road, if you're going in a northern direction, making the left turn on to Watkins Mill to go to 355, we've had some serious accidents right at that corner with people making that new left turn. And I live right at that entrance there, and right at the entrance of my development, there was a fatality about two months ago. So I, Greg and John, if you, we could get the state to look at that corner and potentially consider putting a left turn light there, so we could, you know, kind of regulate that left turn. Because as I said, there've been a couple of pretty nasty accidents, some people making that left turn. Cars come up Clopper Road, past the bowling alley at a, quite a clip sometimes. And, and we don't, I don't want it to get any worse than it is. One of, a couple of my neighbors came over and mentioned something to me. And that's, that's a, that's an intersection we need to look at. If we need to follow up with a call or a discussion or an email, Greg and John, I can do that tomorrow. But really that.
The left turn from Watkins Mill onto Clopper?
No, from Clopper Road, coming down from Germantown.
Oh, okay.
You know, okay, making that left on to Watkins Mill. And I'm sure lots of people use that to go straight to, to 270.
Right.
And, and as I said, we've seen some pretty nasty accidents at that, that intersection there and a little bit down near my house, as I said, near my, at the entrance to my development, there was a fatality about two months ago. Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, we could follow up with Tony Berger, who is our director of public work, who deals with all our transportation stuff.
Yeah, and I know that's a state road, so we'd have to get them involved.
Right.
Okay.
Automobile accident or was that a pedestrian crossing the road accident?
No, it was an automobile accident. The, I'm talking about automobile. Most of these were automobile accidents. Right there at that intersection and then a little bit down close to the, the entrance to my development. Okay. And it's significant enough to bring it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Danny. All right, did I get everybody? I think so, right? I think so. Okay, so Greg, John, what's the news tonight?
So I do have the continuation of the delegated authority discussion that we had the last meeting. I'm just to remind everyone, the commission did delegate the authority to the staff to review covered outdoor dining facilities as a minor site plan amendment. The commission did request that it return with some more guidelines or parameters on what would still be a staff approval and what would require planning commission review. The memo, it's in front of you guys, that was sent, those were in the packet. Request that the planning commission allowed staff to review in temporary outdoor dining canopies. For definition purposes, we're saying 30 days or less as a temporary structure. Anything beyond that, we would, we would review as a permanent structure. And then the, the threshold on planning commission or staff review would be 15% of the outdoor space compared to the indoor dining facility. That does align as well with what staff currently can review as relates to residential improvements. So if a site plan amendment came in for house and house additions only 10%, we review those currently at a staff level. Any enclosed or seasonally enclosed facilities, and again, for clarity, we're including that to be like permanent or temporary enclosures, walls, retractable curtains or similar type of materials used to enclose the space, we would still bring that back to the planning commission, and then obviously anything over 15% would come to the planning commission.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say is I'd give yourself 90 days on temporary, like tents or canopies. Basically take the whole season, you know?
I would agree.
We can, we can change that.
I agree.
If you think about somebody coming in and wanting to do, you know, covered dining with a tent in a parklet or something, you know, it's effectively going to be, you know, March through September, maybe even six months or something like that. I don't see any problem with that. I do essentially a dining season and that would be fine.
Okay, we can definitely make that change.
What would happen after the expiration? They just come back again and ask for another season or another permit? Is that what they would do?
Yeah, we have a temp permit that can be issued currently. They are temporary in nature. So if someone wanted another tent, they would have to come back and ask for another one. But we would probably again start looking at if someone tried to come in multiple times in a row, look at that as a cumulative effect. At that point, we would tell them to come in and make it a permanent outdoor structure.
But I think as a practical matter, you know, those, those party tents last for a few months and they're fine, you know, for essentially a season. And I think it's okay to take, make that a reasonable temporary term.
Okay. So the commission's good with everything else. I will finalize a memo and just float it through staff so everyone understands. And then at some point, we would like to codify these changes. We'll probably do that with a future amendment to the code where we can clean up that as a housekeeping item.
Sounds good. Any other? Sounds good, any other, any other concerns? Okay. Great, thanks, Greg.
Yep, thank you. And then the last thing is to remind you that our next meeting, and I'm sorry, my calendar up, is August fourth, and that is our only meeting in the month of August.
Oh, so we're doing the first, that's right, the first Wednesday, but we don't do the second or the third, rather.
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay, we do have a work session, don't we?
Oh, you're correct, and sorry, my calendar's not up, August twenty third is a joint work session.
Yep, okay. Thanks, Greg, again. Director Slipting, what's the news from the front office?
Good evening, commissioners. I do want to say that on this outdoor dining issue, we've gotten a lot of very positive press. For for a few minutes, we were getting some negative press because we were we had withdrawn the temporary permits, but because Greg and his team have acted so quickly and gotten the delegated authority and a new permit in process, you know, that that we were kind of on the cutting edge of allowing permanent outdoor dining after COVID. So thank you for that, and I also want to thank you for your kind words about the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan Amendment. Yeah, I am extremely proud of that team, Rob Robinson, Kirk Eby and Laura Mahfoud, who have done incredible job of, you know, throughout the process, the public outreach, everything about it. It really is state of the art, best practices, we're very proud of this and thank you for your approval tonight. We did have a very long meeting, speaking of Rockville meetings, Danny, we had a very long meeting of the mayor and council on Monday night, it lasted past eleven thirty, which is very unusual. And planning issues were second and third to last on the agenda. The cremation services text amendment went to policy discussion and did pass. It wasn't unanimous, but it did pass. The Everbrook Academy schematic development plan did not pass. So it looks like we're going back to the mayor and council in August for a denial resolution. But we're struggling a little bit with the findings for that denial resolution, but by the way or the other, we'll get there. But thank you for a great meeting tonight.
And thank you, I'll I'll reiterate what we said before about how 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 stellar the the staff is 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 working these days, I know that's been working remotes its own challenges, working under the pressures and concerns and you know, anxiety of a pandemic is its own concern, and yet like you said, I mean, they pulled off this state of the art planning, a master plan amendment that I I think really sets a tone for a whole different way of thinking about what we do in the city and and beyond at some point, so nice work.
Well, John, if I could, if I can add, you know, through the whole pandemic, your team, John, John Slipting, your team has not missed a beat. And they always, they continue to make us look good, so really thank you to your entire staff for just making us look good.
Amen, I would agree with that.
Although it's gonna take, it's gonna take way more than that staff to make me look good. That's a lot.
We just need to straighten, we just need to straighten out your wifi.
Yeah, that's a lot of ballots to fill.
Wifi, somebody has to chip in, which is
I don't know what's happening, it's it's like gone downhill over the past few weeks, so I don't know, gotta do something, anyway. All right, so John, that's, you're all set tonight, Greg, we're good, hi Frank, thanks for joining us. You've been, you've been in the background there the whole time, anything to add?
I just needed to unmute, no, I, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thanks, Frank. All right, if there's nothing else tonight, I'm looking around a little grid here, I don't see any, oh, Lloyd, please.
No, I think he was just I was making a motion.
Then if there's nothing else, have a great night, great rest of your week, and we're adjourned.